Good evening. FRC Media is pleased to host tonight's forum featuring the candidates running for Fall River City Council. My name is Keith Debo, Director of FRC Media, and I'll be serving as the moderator for this evening's event. We're holding two city council forums tonight. The second forum will be held later this evening, beginning at 8:00 PM. All candidates were invited to participate, and the makeup of our two panels were determined by draw. The candidates with us for our first panel are in alphabetical order Shaun Kadim, Michael Canuel, Brad Kilby, Cliff Ponte, and Ricky Tith. Candidates Linda Pereira and Nathan Sylvia were invited to also attend this evening's forum but did not participate this evening. Also joining us tonight is a panel of individuals who will be asking questions of the candidates. They are Michael Sylvia, a Fall River reporter, Pamela Martin from FRG TV, and Dan Maderas from the Herald News. Thank you for joining us tonight. The format of tonight's forum is as follows. Our forum will last 90 minutes. There will be no opening statements, but each candidate will be invited to present a 90-second closing statement. Each candidate will answer every question from our panelists, and will have 90 seconds to do so. There will be no rebuttals. Prior to each question, we'll randomly draw a candidate's name, and that candidate will respond to the question first. Then we'll head, as you watch us, to the right until all candidates have answered each question. Once each candidate has answered a question once, we'll put the names back into our cup and continue to draw names until we reach our closing statement. And then at that point, again, from those remaining in our cup, we'll draw a candidate's name, and that individual will present his closing statement first. All right, we are set to begin. Let's get right to it. Let's start with our first question tonight from Michael Sylvia from the Fall River reporter, and the question will be answered first by Ricky Tith.
Fall River has had five police chiefs in the past 10 years. Fall River Police Chief Kelly Fertada was approved on a one-year contract in May and appears will become a civil service position next year. If elected, how would you like to see the next chief of police process work? For example, would you want to hire from within, go outside the city, stuff like that?
Thank you for the question, Mike. For me, I want to hire within, in outer city, not in the city. Because I feel that if you are hiring persons, people in and from outside the city, you will have no connection to any person in Fall River or elected official. And as for the civil service, I'm not very fond of it. I'm always a regular hiring, like the process of like the New Bedford they have. Because when I first came in as a councillor, and that was the big talk, you know, talking about not going to civil service, just hiring in the process. But unfortunately, we had to take the civil service route. But definitely, I'm not in front of hiring in the people in the city.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Please finish, I'm sorry.
So if we try that hiring out people outside the city and we cannot find it, then we'll come back into the opportunity to give the people inside in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Kadim.
Thank you, Mike. First of all, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to be here. So in terms of the question on the process of the police chief, so assuming that it's not a civil service process, we haven't gotten to that part, I think we should be doing exactly what the city of New Bedford did. You know, I was one of the more vocal councillors to talk about the need for somebody who has the ability to lead the department. I think the department needs change, so I'm not adverse to having somebody from the outside coming in. I just want the best and brightest to serve the city of Fall River. But I think it should be opened up to a national search. So if there's somebody internally that can do that, then I'm okay with that. But there is some underlying issues that we've got to address, and that is the culture that has been taking place in the police department for far too long. We've talked about the internal politics that has taken place. We just need real leadership at the top to change that culture, and it's going to take a while. So we need somebody who is going to hold people accountable, is going to be fair and consistent with their leadership. So that would be the process if it's not civil service. If it's civil service, then I support the civil service process as it calls for, you know, the top three candidates to be chosen and the process to move forward on that.
Thank you. Mr. Canuel.
I want the best candidate for the job, and I like what New Bedford did. They opened it up, internal and external. I think we should look at people's qualifications and who's the best candidate for the job. Something else I'd like to see us do is something I've seen past mayoral administrations do, which is they gave the neighborhoods a seat at the table. I think we need to strengthen our neighborhoods. There's a lot going on in some of these neighborhoods with crime and drugs and gangs, and we need them to help us weigh in a little bit, to make sure we get their buy-in. They've had a seat at the table in the past, not so much lately. I'd like to see that, who their choice would be as well, once we narrow it down to a few candidates.
Thank you. Mr. Kilby.
Yes, thank you very much for allowing me to participate here tonight. There's no doubt about it, in my opinion, that there is internal strife within the Fall River Police Department, and I'm not in denial on that. Five chiefs in a short period of time, it's not stability. And this last go-around with the ex-chief and the new chief was a very difficult decision for me, knowing the ex-chief, him and his family. With that said, we definitely need to reform in that department. Do I like some of the things I see now with the current chief? Yes, I like the transparency with regard to hearing about the rest, the statistics and different things. She has the support of the department. The city council, we gave her a one-year contract. Right now, as Council Kadim said, it's with the state legislature whether or not we're going to go to civil service or not. So if this type of dysfunction continues, I am really, if it goes any further, I am in favor of looking outside the city. I've confided in some, or one in particular, a very, very qualified individual who I confide with on these issues many times. And the New Bedford model, what they've done, you know, there's going to be some kickback and resistance, I think, from the police department if we go outside, but we have to do that if we have to do it.
Thank you. Linda Pereira has joined us for our panel. Thank you for joining us, Linda. Would you like, Mike, to repeat the question for you?
I think the question is about the police chief and whether we should go civil or civil service or anything else. I have to say that I agree with a lot of what I've heard from different of my colleagues and from Mr. Canuel as well. I liked when we selected Chief Racine, that the interviews were all televised. I think they should be. I think they should be televised. I agree that possibly civil service could be the answer, but I think getting a chief from outside of the community, coming in, having no connections with anyone in the department, I think that would be a good model as well. But I really think that interviews should be televised, just like they do in other communities for varied positions. But I had a lot of ups and downs, and it was a tough decision for the new chief to come in. But quite frankly, the officers that I've spoken to, and from my jobs as an investigator with either DCF or DSS at the time, and the District Attorney's Office, I know a lot of the police officers, having worked with them. And I'm hearing very positive feedback. I can say that when I've reached out to the chief or anything, issues are resolved. So I'm happy with what's there now, and hopefully, going forward, will continue. There's always a lot of animosity within certain departments and divisions where, you know, one person may feel one way about something, one person feels another way, but I think they're doing a good job overall. Thank you.
Mr. Ponte.
Yeah, so the process that needs to happen when it comes to our police chief, mainly for any department head, is a fair and transparent process. And the civil service process, in my opinion, is going to force the city to go through a process that is a fair and transparent process. The process that we just went through this year was not a fair and transparent process. It was a politically motivated decision to appoint a person to police chief that I don't believe had the necessary experience to do the job. However, I have since candidly spoken out about the support, and I wish that department to continue to succeed. However, we have a culture problem. We, for many years, have had a comp time problem. We have had a number of issues when it comes to personnel and clicks. We have to take the politics out of our police department. That needs to be a priority over the next two years and beyond. What I really want to hear is a police chief that can work with the city to try to find how we can get 245 police officers back to what we had in 2009. We haven't seen those numbers yet. We have to start working on a plan within the police department to make sure we have more police officers on our streets. I know that's all political buzzwords during campaign seasons, but that's the reality. We need to make sure the residents of this community are safe, and if I'm fortunate enough to get re-elected, I will continue to hold the administration accountable, the police department accountable, every department head accountable, to make sure that they produce and they execute within their departments. But to summarize, we have to take the politics out of the police department.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Pam Martin from FRG TV, and will be answered first by Cliff Ponte.
Okay. Ten people died in the Gabriel House fire, as we know, and I think what was most troubling besides the deaths was the National Fire Protection Association, a nonprofit group, found that some of the sprinklers were more than 20 years old and inoperable. The investigation found that if these sprinklers were working, most likely, most definitely, lives would not have been lost. But this building passed inspections, passed several inspections. What are you, as one councillor, going to do to hammer out and make sure that these inspectors are doing the jobs properly? Perhaps there's necessary training needed so that we can prevent future fatalities like this.
So first, my heart continues to go out to the families and those who are impacted by a horrific event. I don't think the state or the Commonwealth has ever seen something to that magnitude in a long time. And it's unfortunate that Fall River had to lead in that category. However, we unfortunately have to, and the other thing I want to say is, how this community came together at a time of struggle and weakness speaks to the character and the integrity and the moral compass that this community has. That's the first thing. The number of organizations that came out and tried to help those in need need to be commended. With that being said, it all goes back to staffing, budgets, and execution, right? If we had more firefighters on and a plan to make sure that the firefighters could get there quicker, that would have been resolved. If we had more firefighters in outreach or when it comes to inspections, in train to do that and specifically do that, maybe that building would have been closed down and those residents would have been relocated. It really all comes down to planning and making sure that we have our sights set on what's important, instead of being reactive when events like that terribly occur. I got to say that I'm proud to have supported public safety on my term on the city council, but I don't think we've been able to do enough. And as one councillor who's a legislator, who can hold department heads accountable and making sure that we help the taxpayers and the residents of this community, I'll continue to do that and continue to advocate for more staffing, continue to advocate for apparatus upgrades, and continue to make sure that the resources are on our streets and our classrooms and that our department heads have the ability to succeed.
Thank you. Mr. Tith.
So the Gabriel House, first, I want to say my media soul rests in peace and send my condolences to all the family member. But the way I see it is like we always have a lesson to learn. We have the tragedy of a homeless man that passed away during COVID, and now the Gabriel House because we don't have any action plan or we don't have any oversee basis depending on which department, what they're doing, or just do an audit to see if they have any plan, what's going on, how to cope. So everything is never, you know, 100% fully inspected. And so now to come the time, it caused the issue, and now we have short manpower and equipment. So, you know, I hopefully that being another two-year councillor sitting there, try to come up with a plan with all the departments, see what is, how can I help to advocate that and what need to be implemented for the next, so what happened in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Kadim.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say that I'm extremely proud of our first responders and the work that they've done, especially some of our residents who just ran to that devastating fire and helped out. One thing I will say is that I think the city council does a tremendous job of, unfortunately, given the fact that we are a legislative body, it's always being reactionary, and that's the only way we can function as a city council because we have no day-to-day authority. But we've done a good job of, when we see these incidences, getting the administration to come down and have conversations, whether it's through public safety, and I believe my colleague Linda Pereira has already filed a resolution to make sure that these types of inspections are being conducted in a proper manner. But the one thing that we need to really do is make sure that we do a little bit of a better job of holding the department heads accountable in terms of providing information to us well in events, so we are not becoming reactionary to these types of situations. My colleague, Council Ponte, mentioned that it comes back down to budget, manpower, and having the resources for additional training and the support services that are needed. When you start looking at the conversations that we're having, we're talking about public safety, police, fire, DPW, those are large departments. But the departments that are doing some of these inspections as well is the building department, understaffed, right? So some of these other departments need to be provided with the proper resources. But that comes with having these conversations with the administration, making sure the administration is coming down to the city council and telling us what they need. They're the ones that are running the day-to-day operation.
Thank you.
Give us the ask, tell us what type of support and funding you need from the city council, and we're more than willing to help support that.
Thank you. Mr. Canuel.
First, my condolences to everybody impacted by that tragedy that night. It's awful that so many people passed away, and as Council Kadim said, at this point, you know, we are reacting to it. And in a world of the future, we really need to be more proactive in what we're doing. We need to make sure we're building back. We don't treat public safety as a line item that can just be cut and in a bad budget. We need to make sure when we get these, hopefully the safer grants come through, and we get more officers that, three years down the line, when those safer grants expire, that there's a plan already built in so that we keep those firefighters in place. Because those national standards make a difference. Their standards for a reason. Their numbers, and they're the experts of what is needed, and I believe it would have made a difference. I don't know how many, but I believe if we had a few more guys on those trucks, we only had two fully staffed that night, I think it would have made a difference, and less people would have lost their lives. I think that's really important for us to keep in our mind as we move forward, so we don't have a repeat tragedy. And also lead by example. Other communities are going to face this situation at some point probably on their own, and if we can set the goal of leading by example, other communities will say, you know what, if it's important to Fall River to be fully staffed, it's important to us to be fully staffed as well. We'll learn from what they went through. I also think that when it comes to our trucks and things like that, we've got to make sure we're building in our equipment. I think, you know, some of these backup vehicles are from 1999, 2000.
Thank you. Mr. Kilby.
Yes, thank you. Gabriel House fire was a fire of just historic proportions, national proportions. I believe it was one of the most tragic in the history of the state of Massachusetts. The heroic efforts on the part of the firefighters, the first responders, and the community was just overwhelmingly passionate. But to answer the question, I think, as Council Kadim stated, we're a legislative branch. I know myself, the years, all the years I've been serving as a city councillor, I have always supported every single appropriation that has come down to me, from the fire department and the police department, so to speak. So government is very reactive, correct? I mean, I think when that Gabriel House fire happened, I was thinking about the Coconut Grove fire in 1941, and how unprepared the public safety protocol and their doors and exit doors not opened in an outward manner. So I just will promise to continue supporting the fire department, as I always have, be an advocate for them. And again, it just brings to light that the fire department is a very, very, very important aspect of our city. And I remember years ago, maybe back when I was a teenager or in high school, Fall River was ranked one of the best fire departments in the country.
Thank you.
So, I yield, thank you.
Mr. Pereira.
Well, I would also like to say that our first responders did an awesome job. Police actually arrived at the scene because they were closer, and neighbors were bringing out ladders. I did file a resolution, let's look into it, but I think some of the rules and regulations need to change on the state level as well. If you're a nursing home, you get inspected every year. If you're in assisted living, it was like once every two years. If you're, some of the things that could have helped, people on the second or third floor, they could have had slides like they have on a plane. You could slide people down, getting people out quicker. You shouldn't bolt air conditioners to windows. You shouldn't have paper reports of what medication individuals are on. It should be on a computer. So when all these individuals went to the tomato center, you could go on a computer, you could access, are they a diabetic? What's their medication? What's their dosage? Who's their doctor? What's their contact information? You know what it's like? I was at the tomato center both days. I know I'm a legislative body, but I've always been an advocate or always trying to help out in the community in ways that I can. To have a man who has a double amputee, who I know him, whose mother's ashes were there, and have an EMT get those ashes for him, I didn't even want to give him the ashes. Father Rob gave them to him. Because I figured you have to do a prayer or something. I just didn't want to say, here's your mom's ashes. Let Father Rob do it. To have a woman who could barely speak English, to not remember her brother's phone number because she didn't have it with her, and finally to remember and reach out, and to have her daughter call at 6:00 in the morning.
Thank you.
That's what it was about, helping people.
All right. Dan Maderas will have our next question for the candidates, and this one will be answered first by Brad Kilby.
So we often hear that with more housing supply, the cost of rent is expected to drop in Fall River. But what can the council do before then to help address the complaints of people struggling to afford housing right now?
That's a very good question, a difficult question to answer, but I'll try my best. There's been talk of rent control. You know, if that ever comes before the city council as a proposal, I will definitely research that. And so that's, again, there's pros and cons with everything. So that's one thing, I think, as a city, that we may explore. And I'm not the mayor of Fall River. I hope the mayor has looked at all the options because it is becoming unaffordable. And the city is drastically changing with the rail, with all the market rate housing, with just a wide variety, a gamut of things. But the income hasn't, or the cost of living is increased with the rents and things, but what's coming in the household has not. It's not consumer to the increases. So there's some really tough decisions that have to be made over the last two years with regard to that housing issue. And I'm sure we're going to get a question, what's our top three priorities? And that's one of them, one of them, to make Fall River not only an attractive place to come with revitalized waterfront, with clean streets, public safety up to par, but also we somehow have to address the increase in rents.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Pereira.
I think that is a very difficult question to answer, and none of us have a solution for it. I'll be honest with you. If anybody here does, let them say. Council Kadim did put in a resolution this past Tuesday at the council meeting, which will be addressed at finance next council meeting on the 28th, and then it would go to the ordinance committee, hopefully. But it's difficult because people have come in and bought homes for very high prices. When would you think a six-family would go for $1 million, or a three-family go for $600,000? That person now has that mortgage to pay, and people's rents are going to go up. What bothers me is that we have people from out of town that come into Fall River and are living in affordable housing units that we have, but what other communities have done that? What other communities around us have a shelter, have clinics, have, you know, affordable housing? They don't, and everybody then comes back to Fall River. We have a lot of affordable housing, but unfortunately, it's not within reach to our residents. I just had a call this morning from a woman, a daughter, father was paying $300 a month's rent, house was paid, family that owned it, somebody bought it, now it's $900. He brings home $1,100 in social security. What does that leave him? So it's tough. It is tough. And, I mean, I had property, and my rents were always really reasonable because
Thank you.
our mortgage was little. We could do it.
Thank you. Mr. Ponte.
So my colleague, Councilor Raposo, and I during this term started a resolution that, I don't know where it really went, other than a discussion with the Housing Authority to look at the Wataupa Heights facility that has just been sitting there since 2001, 2000, and nobody's been able to do anything with. We had conversations with the Housing Authority. That's all gummed up at the state level. That's an opportunity in prime real estate to develop it. All I really heard there was a whole bunch of noise that, you know, where we have litigation, we can't do anything. The demolition of the Wataupa Heights development occurred in 2014. I think that was Mayor Lambert may have been mayor at that time, okay? And we've done nothing about it. Councilor Raposo and I and my colleagues on the city council, we had the Housing Authority come, we had the Corporation Council come, and we had discussions. We have an asset, let's see what we can develop. That's number one. But I also had the ability to present a resolution earlier in the term to follow what other communities are doing, which the MMA is supporting, which is an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And unfortunately, that went nowhere with the current city council. It tied up in the ordinance committee, and we didn't get the funding for it. 200, maybe, other communities have adopted such funds. I'm hoping to maybe reintroduce that item with the new city council that comes in to see if we can get some support from the mayor to fund it and get a board together to do that. But I will say this, the 40B process and the process by permitting are two areas of opportunity that the city council could help. It is a little bit of a strenuous process to get a building permit sometimes with site planner review and all the red tape that we have to go through. We have to make it easier for development to occur. The 40B process with the state legislature allows that to happen quicker.
Thank you. Mr. Tith.
Mr. Tith, can you repeat the question?
So we often hear that with more housing supply, the cost of rent is expected to drop. But what can the council do before then to help address the complaints of people who are struggling to afford housing right now?
Again, I wish I have to answer, but some of the questions that we was not prepared for this. Because when I was running 2019, you know, we know that Fall River is going to be booming, and we have a lot of people that own resident property with extra lot. So now it's 2025, the ADU, they pass it, pass it, and we should have let the opportunity of people to build a house first and then come up more development in here, so that way to cap. For example, if somebody, even now, even you have a new developer coming in, we should have, like, okay, you could come in, and then we could, but you have to cap to build a new property or affordable housing. You have to put market rate, you have to put, like, say stop. You only do it for 1,000 for three years. And then if that continue three years, and then you could raise up the rents.
Thank you. Mr. Kadim.
Thank you. So I don't know that any of us really have the answer to this, other than the fact that we need to start having conversations and identify what the solution is for affordability. So I did file a resolution that's going to actually start in that conversation and hopefully guarantee that any new developments will have at least an affordable component to it, whether it's 10%, 15%, or 20%. But just for everybody to know, the average single-family home, the average tax bill is $4,415. The state average tax bill is $7,730. There are only 38 other communities that are lower than the city of Fall River. That being said, the per capita income for the city of Fall River is $21,636. The state per capita income is $93,000, significantly different. So we need to have those conversations about affordability, and it's not just about housing, it's also about inflation, jobs. We need to have all this conversation. Groceries, I just went to breakfast this morning by myself, the bill was $30. $30 for breakfast, it was just eggs, bacon, toast, and it wasn't at my colleague's place, so I will say that. But when we start talking about individuals who live on fixed income, the affordability component is just through the roof. We had Liberty Utilities hearing last night in terms of a 30% increase in utility bills. Something has to be done, and I think with the resolution, my colleagues and I will have those conversations, bring in the necessary stakeholders to the table to try to identify that, and I 100% support
Thank you.
my colleagues' resolution to have a trust fund to support some of that.
Thank you. Mr. Canuel.
Well, I've heard that more housing will lower the prices of rents. I haven't seen the data to support that yet. I'm waiting for someone to show me that. I'm not convinced that that's really the case. As far as what the city council can do, first, they're the ones As far as what the city council can do, first, they're the ones setting the tax rates, right? They're setting the residential rates, they're setting the business rates, they're setting the water and the tax fees. And when we vote, if we vote to increase that, that has a direct effect on the people in this city. Landall Dock is just going to absorb those costs. They're going to pass that on to the tenants, right? So I think one of the biggest things we have to really look at over the next couple of years is doing our best to control any increases or keep those not at all, right? I think we need to get creative in looking at new ways to generate revenue and not just always hit the taxpayers every time. I think when I think about the tax rates that are being set by the city as well, one of the biggest things that irks me is the valuations get played with too, right? So they, even if we kept the rates flat, they'll say, well, your house is worth $50,000 more, and all of a sudden, you're still paying more. So I think we need to look at not just playing with these valuations either, just to drive more money.
Thank you. We'll go back now to Michael Silvia, a Fall River reporter, for our next question. And it'll be answered first by Sean Kadeem.
The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has determined that Fall River needs intervention when it comes to special education. Percentage of children with disabilities who graduate with regular high school diploma in Fall River is 49%. The state target is 79%. It's 30% difference, right? Or sorry, 20% difference. 42% of those with disability in Fall River drop out. The state target is 12%. There's a 30% difference. What are your ideas to address this?
Support my colleagues on the school committee. That's ultimately their responsibility, but I will say that, one, I think that comes back down to leadership. I think there's been a number of conversations at the, that have been held at the school committee level about the current leadership with regards to the school department. When we start looking at the amount of investment that is going over to the schools, it's higher than it's ever been. And I served on the school committee, I was city administrator. We struggled to meet 100% of that school spending. We were having layoffs, pink slips. So to see the amount of influx of cash coming in from the, from the state to provide over to the schools and not seeing any type of real return on investment is concerning. So outside of that, I don't know from a city council what we can do other than to support providing more funding. But clearly, funding hasn't created or made the difference that it should have made. I know when we were on the school committee, we were always talking about different programs, trying to invest in different, you know, classrooms and things of that nature to be more inclusive. But we were struggling with cash. Now that there is a cash flow there, I'm not seeing any difference. The graduation rates haven't changed. So we would, as a liaison to the school committee, just support the school committee in what they need. But ultimately, it really does fall on the school committee for that.
Thank you. Mr. Canule.
I do agree with Councilor Kadeem that we need a school committee to really drive that conversation. The city council allocates the budget to the school department. But one thing that I do think about that I think we need in the schools that might help that potentially is just helping make them a little bit safer and making the students feel safer. I believe every school, whether it's small or large like Durfee, should have a school resource officer in every school. There are way too many school shootings out there. I'm not saying that's why people are staying home, but I will tell you that people want to feel safe in this community. People want to feel safe going to school when, I think, you know, there was that incident Diamond a bit ago. I think people stayed out the next day because they didn't necessarily feel safe. So I think just that presence in the schools, I think, would be a nice place to start looking at and investing in.
Thank you. Mr. Kilby.
Yes. I was a member of the Fall River School Committee for 10 years, so it's been a while since I was a member, and times have changed drastically. But I will say, again, it is a school committee role. And I know the special ed allocation in the budget, and by the way, the school department budget is half of the overall city budget roughly. The special education allocation is huge. Out of district placements, so a student where, who needs cannot met, cannot be met in the Fall River schools can petition for an out of district placement. And it's very, very expensive. I will say that we have a very exciting candidate, I think, running for school committee, Anna Riley. And she was just chosen Superintendent of the Year in the state of Rhode Island. And I'm very happy. I hope she does well. And one of her, I think, large accolades was dealing with special education. So the school committee has, just like we have to take a look at our issues on the city side, our housing issue with the last question, the school committee is going to take a good look at that statistic. And many years ago, once again, when I was on the school committee, the high school graduate, graduation rate was deplorable, deplorable. I think it was half. The students went into Durfee as freshmen, some, you know, didn't graduate. They dropped out. So the numbers don't lie. And it's another, another issue
Thank you.
of extreme importance we have to deal with.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira.
I think that it clearly is within the realm of the school committee to deal with issues of what needs to happen within the special ed department. I think as a council, we've always supported the school department in everything that they need. You know, going in and sitting on various IEPs like I did, you know, many years ago. They're pretty strict, and you need to follow the rules. And as Councilor Kilby said, if Fall River cannot provide a service to a child with a special disability, they can go to an out of district placement, which is usually a lot more costly, so they try to provide all those services within the school department. What I'd really like to see, to be honest with you, is see all of our schools be from K to eighth grade. Because I think that's easier for parents, and it puts less middle school kids in just one clump, because that's, I think, a very difficult age group. I had children, and I knew middle school years was tough. And I think that that would be pretty helpful. And also that parents go to one school to pick up whatever, you know, two or three children that they have and not have to run around the city. I don't know that these big schools really helped. And I will give a shout out to parents who are getting kids to school more now than ever before. And I think Amy Brownheart, Dr. Brownheart, I should say, she deserves the title. She has worked diligently to get that done, and I'm glad they can have their cell phones in class. So I think they've done some things that I'm very happy to see.
Thank you. Mr. Ponti.
So I want to remind everybody that the new charter that was adopted several years ago required that the Fall River City Council and the Fall River School Committee convene every single year for a joint meeting. Those joint meetings are sometimes taken completely out of its essential duty, which was to collaborate with our colleagues on the school side to make sure that resources are in our classrooms and making sure that the needs of our students and the needs of our teachers are met. That needs to be, I think, as we go forward as a council and as a legislative body, to have a little bit more laser-focused energy on improving the days, the lives of our children and our teachers. With that being said, I could just advocate as a counselor to the administration and to the school committee that if we continue or have more of an intense focus on the social and emotional needs of our children district-wide, I think that will have, make a minimal impact that throughout five, six, seven, 10 years or 12 years will have a long-term impact on the way our children come out of school. What I think we need to get back to focus on is the fundamentals of education. There's been lots of politics involved with our school committee over the last couple of years. I think some of them have lost sight truly on their intentions on being an elected school committee member, because we need to make sure that there's a focus on giving the children and the teachers the resources that they need to be successful. And unfortunately, I think the school department has got away from that. With that being said, I look forward to continuing to support education.
Thank you. Mr. Tith.
I believe that in order to get it done is mostly is, the key player is the school committee, the superintendent, and also the teacher. And then we had to talk, conversate with them to see what they need to advocate, so we could advocate them and give them a better, more safer place than in a public school. And hopefully, in the next two years, I will be able to sit down with them and talk. And what I don't see mostly is a city or elected official, mostly like counselor, school committee, just sit on one table. I don't know if it's against the charter, but that we should just take out the title and just the leadership and sit down and talk to each other on a round table to discuss more what is the issue, what we need in our school public.
Thank you. Our next question will be asked by Pamela Martin of FRGTV, and will be answered first by Michael Canule.
Okay, I'm going to credit the Fall River reporter here for this one, their Facebook page. In August, a neighbor near Kennedy Park posted a sign on his fence, and the sign says, I quote, "Stay out of my yard. If I catch you stealing, I'll beat you. If you don't think I can, ring the doorbell," unquote. So it's pretty apparent that the homeowner near Kennedy Park is fed up with the thefts. He's attributed them to the homeless population that's near Kennedy Park. What would you say to this homeowner and perhaps advise them?
Well, thank you, Pam. I think this is, comes back to, it's two issues, right? It's public safety, presence in our community, and the homeless, which I think we all agree that homeless isn't a Fall River problem, it's a, it's a national problem, right? So I think for me, the big focus is improving our police numbers. I think about what we had when I was a kid, growing up. We had 12, I think it was 12 squad cars with two policemen in it, walk-in beats, motorcycle police, environmental police, park police, cemetery police, right? And most days, we got 10 cars with one officer in it. We don't have park police anymore. We don't have cemetery police. I think about, you know, if we had the park police still around in Kennedy Park, maybe that situation wouldn't have happened over there. I think one of the things we have to look at is how to improve public safety and improve that police presence. I think, I looked at data from Eastern Avenue, and we have a lot of folks just cruising through Northeastern Avenue. And that used to be a full-time job when I was a kid. I was an officer at the end of Hyrum Street, all day, every day. And that, those numbers that I saw from the police sergeant in the month of June would pay for that officer for that single month if they were just out there all day writing tickets. So you do that all year long, and we'd have some additional officers on the streets that we could put in those neighborhoods, walk in the streets, in the parks, and hopefully keep folks away from residential areas at least.
Thank you. Mr. Kilby.
Yes, I think that homeowner was wrong for posting a sign like that, but it shows desperation, for sure. To post a sign, a warning about a gun and things like that, that raises some concern. But the man sounds very desperate. There's no denying our homeless problem, as Mr. Canule just said, nationwide and throughout the city. I think the city is doing their best to offer options and try to alleviate that problem, that issue, as much as we can. And there is a congregation of homeless in Lower Kennedy Park there. And don't forget, this is, the state of Massachusetts is the only state in the country that's a safe haven state. Beyond that, New York City is. So there is very limited things we can do to just eject people who are illegally in camping. We did pass an ordinance. It's difficult to enforce any ordinance. We did put a fine there, but good luck with that. But many of these human beings, of these individuals, we, we offer help to them and alternatives and things that, and that's the key word, help. And they don't want it. But, you know, maybe that individual should get a camera at his, on his property. But if those type of things are happening
Thank you.
quality of life issues are fundamental to any
Thank you.
safe community.
Thank you.
And the city's doing all we can to, as much as
Thank you.
we can with homelessness.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira.
I think our FAST team has done a great job of going out into the encampments and trying to help people. People are offered drug and alcohol rehab treatment, you know, people, there's nobody that's living in an encampment that is a family with children. That, that's not happening. There are placements, those, some of the individuals do not want the help. They don't want the help. I think where this entire state is failing us, there are people that have mental health issues, and they're not being addressed. When they closed Totten State, when they closed Paul Deva, they put all of those individuals into the communities, but the communities didn't have the research, the resources to handle that. I believe that the gentleman that had shot one of our police officers, Tommy Junta, had been released from one of those facilities. So I think that this is a state problem. They need to look at this. Homelessness is not only happening in Fall River, it is happening not only in the United States, but in Europe. I happened to be in Italy for my 50th wedding anniversary, and there were lots of homeless people as well. I just think that, that one of the encampments that they cleared out, they got two people that were able to be sectioned, and they got most people into treatment. And I think we're such a good community, you see people who are homeless, you go bring clothes, you go bring food, you help. But then the food that's not eaten stays there, creating rodents. The clothes that's not worn, I get calls that, you know, you got to go
Thank you.
behind Taco Bell. There's trash there.
Thank you. Mr. Ponti.
I will support a plan that comes down for whoever the mayor is going to be in the next two years, to provide funding necessary to make sure that we do a better job of addressing the homelessness issue in the city, because this was a result of a homeless problem, to answer your question. However, I don't want to lose sight of everything that this city has done to support the homeless population. To my colleague to my right, who mentioned she was 100% right when she says the FAST team has had a remarkable impact and continues to chip away at a very, very important, challenging problem. But we have to do a better job, I think, of working and supporting more outreach programs, whether it's in-house or through organizations like Stepping Stone. Continue to purchase things like shower trailers and laundry trailers. Continue to support the FAST team and everything that they do. Advocate for funding at the state and federal level to assist cities like Fall River when it comes to the homeless problem. But I don't want to lose sight of what we do and what we have accomplished. We've closed down a number of camps. The mayor, with support of the city council, has closed down encampments that were blight to neighborhoods and locations. We need to do more of that. We need to continue to make sure that those people who are homeless get the support they need. But I would put Fall River up against any city in the state of Massachusetts for what they, they try, key word, try to do to support the homeless population. Can we do more? Yes. The city council can continue to advocate for programs like this to continue to succeed.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Tith.
So the question is, why the homeowner put the sign? Well, they must have been fed up because people trash passion into their property. And, and why does it get to there? Because I guess we tried to clean out all the encampment, and they are now scattering everywhere. So hopefully, you know, the next two mayors in two years, they have come up with a more action plan. Because I believe that just taking out the encampment, it doesn't solve anything. We don't have, I don't know if they have a solution or a plan that before do that, they have a safe parking for people to go in there to, for example, park in the vehicle there, or maybe have a tent built in there, and then we bring all the resource to come in, and then we put a checklist to, you know, to make sure that they have ability to go, continue on to be more stabilized. That's the kind of category that we never defined, and we need to define that. And as for public safety, you know, I think we now, we have short manpower on policing, but I recommend Chief Kelly doing a police ambassador, so that way people like citizens, they would like to, you know, volunteer to be a police ambassador.
Thank you. Mr. Kadeem.
Thank you. So what would my response be to the homeowner?
Yes.
We failed you. So I don't disagree with my colleagues. I think the administration, the mayor, Mike Coogan, the FAST team have done a phenomenal job with homelessness. Now homelessness isn't just a housing issue, it's a human issue, right? So we've done a good job with the unhomed. What we have failed are the residents who are impacted by homelessness in the encampments. We need to lead with empathy, but we have to have discipline. And I think we need to make sure that public safety and public health are a priority. And quite frankly, I think we need to start holding other communities responsible as well. This is a regional approach. When we start looking at all the resources that have been provided, it's always coming through the city of Fall River. It's the city of Fall River who is providing the resources. What about the other communities? When we start looking at the individuals that are in these housing encampments, a good majority of them are not from the city of Fall River. So we hear residents come before us asking for help, and we do not have the answers for them, and we don't have a lot of tools to be able to provide it. But what we can do is hold people accountable. We did just pass an ordinance. I know it's only a fine, but prior to 2014, it was illegal for us to remove homeless people from public space. The Supreme Court in 2004 has allowed us to pass ordinances. We did that. Now the enforcement needs to take place. We need the police department. We need all of the city of Fall River departments to enforce what we have on the books, hold them accountable, get them the services that they need. But at the end of the day, public safety and public health has to be a primary concern for those residents and I feel for them.
Thank you. Next up is Dan Medeas of the Herald News for our next question and it will be directed to Linda Pereira.
So what role should the council have in guiding development of the Route 79 area? And what do you think that area should look like when it's done?
Dan, I'll be honest with you. That area needs to be done the right way. If not, we've lost a great opportunity. Right now, it's in the state. Is the state going to take care of it? Is the city going to take care of it? They're looking at maybe doing some type of a dual partnership. I think there should be businesses along the waterfront that would be open all year round. I think they need to have parking there and they can have residences as well. But that project, to be honest, I'm really afraid of because if it's not done correctly, we're going to lose. There's great architect, development architects that could come down and put great plans together. I've seen some. So I don't know who the person is that's going to put the plan together, who they're going to hire, if they're going to go for bid, but that one, we're really keeping an eye, I know I'm keeping an eye on it because it should be where you can go there all year long. It should become an attraction and we should have more moorings out there for more boats in the summertime so people see it, they stop in Fall River because we do have a lot of good things here to see. We are our own worst enemies. We don't promote ourselves. You look at social media and it's negatives about the city and not the positives we have. Go to Charleston, Carolina, you pay money to see these beautiful houses, you know, on the water. What about the Highlands and the widow watchers that we have there? They're better than anyone I've ever seen in Charleston, but we don't promote ourselves well. And that really hurts me. That bothers me.
Thank you. Mr. Ponti.
So we have a little bit of a turf war going on right now, right? We have the city's redevelopment authority in the city and Mr. Fiola through B C E D C, and then we have the state that are kind of at war with each other about who's going to control what happens down there. Here's what I can tell you. I want to have a vibrant, walkable, mixed-use neighborhood down there. I want to make sure that the master plan that I have right here is followed to a T or at least followed so that we can have walkable areas and we can have areas for small businesses to succeed. I can tell you as a person who has a lot of employees that are also involved in small businesses, we need to make sure that we have an emphasis on small business growth and development. We need to make sure that is walkable. We need to make sure that it is vibrant and we need to make sure that we give the proper resources to developers to develop them quicker. I'm not saying tiffs or ties for real top-end real estate. I'm not saying that. I'm saying we need to have a combination of housing down there, small businesses that are going to succeed because with housing, affordable housing and market rate housing, you're going to have people walking and spending money in our city. I own a business directly across the street from where this is happening. Nobody wants to see this happen more than me and it be more successful than I do. But I'll tell you right now, the community is going to truly benefit from a vibrant, walkable, mixed-use neighborhood. That's what needs to happen and I'm hoping whoever the mayor is and whatever the state legislature wants to do, they come to terms and they do it quickly to benefit this city. That's what I'll advocate for.
Thank you. Mr. Thith.
Well, Route 79, that is a beautiful place to put. I'm, hopefully in the future, whoever's control or whoever come up with the plan, I'm hoping they put more business there and also give the local business to an opportunity to move down there instead of giving the new one to come in. Because you have the boatwalk and then if you have business there and then you have like the pier, the boat coming in, you know, it could be like a Newport, you know. And then, you know, at nighttime, people could go there, have dinners and look at the view. And if you put more housing, market rate housing there, then it will block all the scenery. Because right now, it's already beautiful. When you take a picture, it's like you got train, you got vaccine on all the property, but you don't want to block everything.
Thank you. Mr. Kadim.
Yeah, I don't really want to acknowledge this because then he'll end up trying to run for council president, but Councilor Ponti was spot on, so I don't know, there's a whole lot for me to add to it. But in terms of the role, just one that's supportive, I think that's important for the city council. We have a master plan that was done by professionals. It is smart growth to the T. Now it really comes back to making sure that we do not involve politics in the development of this. It is truly important to make sure that the politics is removed and that the development is done properly and what is right for the city of Fall River. So with that, from a city council standpoint, it is supporting that project, whatever that may look like, whether it's working with the state or working with the redevelopment authority. Either case, I think that project and that master plan needs to be executed and as city council, we just need to, we need to hold the administration and/or the state accountable for executing that plan because the plan, as I see it, is a very good plan.
Thank you. Mr. Canuel.
I'm glad Councilor Pont brought the master plan over there because that's, when I've talked to residents, that's what they want to see. That's what was sold to them. They were sold on that plan, a lot of green space and vibrant area. That is going to be the crowning jewel of our waterfront. We already had a beautiful waterfront. That is only going to enhance it as well. The other thing I think that's coming down the pipeline long-term that I think we should think about is that second pier. We already have developed the Norton Pier. We have a second pier that will be developed later. I think we should look at something a little bit more involved than just a green area for that. I think about things like the Navy Pier in Chicago that is a attraction in and of itself that drives people to that area, that would get people to that area to spend their money at the restaurants and be around there. I know that the redevelopment authority kind of controls this decision and I'm, as far as my role as a counselor, I want to see them and I'll ask them to approve projects that would adhere to what the master plan was promised.
Thank you. Mr. Kilby.
Yes. I'm very, very excited, obviously, about that transformational thing that's happening down the waterfront. I don't think the city's seen anything like this in the last 52 to 75 years. And what goes along with that is a great deal of responsibility to make sure that it's implemented properly. As my colleagues have stated and Mr. Canuel has stated, the master plan is a good one and is a very good resolution, I believe, filed by Council Kamara. And we had a wonderful meeting with Gene Fox, with Mr. Fiola, with an individual representing the state. But you could see that the, a bit of quarrel at the time, you could just feel it, that who is going to make the decisions and control that. So Mrs. Fiola filed legislation for the state to make that determination, maybe it should be the redevelopment authority or maybe it should be the state or maybe it should be a mix of both. But I'm not in favor of any tax incentives down there. This is a different animal. It's prime real estate, as Councilor Pont has said many times. And so this is not like a rehabilitation of a blighted property or an Amazon or, you know, a business that's going to be employing people. So I look at it as totally different and it's a great opportunity for the city.
Thank you. So every candidate thus far has had the opportunity to answer a question first, so their names have been put back and we're going to draw names again and who will answer the next question first, which will be addressed by Pam Martin from FRG TV. And the individual to answer that question first will be Michael Canuel.
Okay, how prepared is industrial park to welcome artificial intelligence companies? AI chat boxes certainly pose a danger to vulnerable people, especially children. That's a whole nother ballgame for another night. I'm just looking at AI stock prices. It's clear that this emerging technology is the future. So is our city ready to accommodate an AI company in regards to infrastructure as well as skilled workers?
Well, that's a, that's a good one. Well, I'm glad we're standing in B C, we're sitting in B C C here and I think the groundwork is being laid. They just rolled out a degree in AI. I know some people who are signed up for that. So I think that's a good start, but no, I don't think we're ready yet. In fact, when I think about just how our city operates at the city government level, I don't think we're incorporating as much AI and technology as we could be at the city level government. I think there's other communities that we can learn from that are doing it a little bit better. So I think right from the get-go, you know, AI is out there to make things more efficient, to help reduce costs, to help improve speed, right? And I think we could start right in our city government, looking at ways to do that and lead by example. But I think, you know, AI is, people are worried about it taking over their jobs. I think, you know, one of the things we have really good in our community is trade school, right? We have diamond and we have people. AI is not going to replace plumbers, not going to replace electricians, at least I hope not. But I think those are, those are important things for us to keep pushing in our schools, not just college, because it seems like, you know, people have gone to college for things and now AI might even be replacing those jobs. So I think it's important that we balance it out in our community and keep, and push trades as well.
Thank you. Mr. Kilby.
Well, AI has come quickly, hasn't it? And that's a, that's a doozy, that question. So are we ready? I don't think we are. No, it's happened so recently. But I think our institutions of higher education would play a huge role in assisting that. We have the UMass facility down near the old Kerr mill site. We have the UMass facility. So, you know, higher education would help foster some of that, you know, welcoming attitude for a company to possibly come in here. We definitely, we definitely, I believe, have the space with innovation way and things of that nature. So that is definitely something that I don't think is an immediate, immediate task, but it's something that we have to look out and be concerned about because it is an emerging technology and in the last 10 years, it has just taken on enormous proportions.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira.
I'm not a big fan of AI and I think that I personally would have to do a lot more research to see if I even want to, I mean, it drives me crazy. They have Chat GPT and you can go on and write something. It's like, what are we teaching our children? To not use their brain? It's almost like we're going to become a very robotic country where, you know, everything is on the computer and you're not thinking. And that's bothersome to me. But I think, you know, is there space? Could there be space? Yes, they could find space. But I think there needs to be a lot more research done before a company like that would come in, I think, on the whole council and for the general public as well. Because I know a lot of grandparents my age don't know much about AI and how that works. I mean, we're just about using our cell phones properly. So I, yeah, I think, thank God I have a grandson. But I just think that there needs to be a lot more knowledge and a lot more research done to handle a situation like that. But thank you. That was a good question, Pam. Good for you.
Oh, well, I'll do my best.
Good one. Good one, Pam.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Ponti.
Pam always comes with the zinger questions. I love it. So I will just tell you this. The city needs to be able to overcome, improvise and adapt, whether it's bringing in AI companies, bringing in, you know, a soda company, bringing in a FedEx company. At the end of the day, the council needs to make sure that they hold the administration accountable for my process and in making it do business in Fall River easier. I will give credit where it's due. The planning department under Mr. Aguirre has done a wonderful job through engineering to automate the permitting process to make things easier. That's what we need to start focusing our energy on. I don't care if it's AI. I don't care who it is. The city needs to make sure that it's easy to do business in Fall River. It shouldn't be that you go to the third floor, to the fifth floor, back to the second floor, upstairs to the sixth floor. We need to make sure that we have a centralized hub for the new development that this city's going to be seeing. We're going to be seeing the Route 79 project coming in. We want to make sure developers and business owners make it easy for them to go in and out of Fall River and they can do business in Fall River. And for many years, Fall River has been a little challenging to do business with. Over the last six to eight years and 10 years, I've seen modernization happening at City Hall, but I think what we can do is do more to advocate for that, making sure that we're modern, making sure that we make it easier for businesses and investors and builders to do business in Fall River. That's where it all begins, in my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Thith.
Well, I'm not, I'm not ready for AI. I'm still struggling on the regular phone. But, you know, that is something new and something that's going to come into the future. And as a city, we have to be peer for that. And the only thing that we could be peer for that is to educate our children and educate the folks that, in the community. And, you know, and then we reach out to the people that are experiencing with that and then we create a fundamental AI learning, you know. And that's, that's the only that I could think of because even now, as a, like a business as well as Councilor Clay Ponte say, we need to give a more easier stream application process because as business owner, when I started, it was a struggle for me, you know, and I managed to do it and then now I have other people to do it and, you know, I guide them because I know the struggle that, how it feels to get that business going and hopefully the AI will give it more easier for people to come in to do the business application.
Thank you. Mr. Kadim.
So the question is, are we ready for?
The question is, are we ready if AI companies decide to indeed set up an industrial park? Do we have the infrastructure and do we have the skilled workers? I mean, what Linda was talking about, the Chat GPT and the vulnerable kids, that's a whole nother beast.
Right.
But are we ready? The big, big AI company wants to come in. I mean, it's here.
So I'm a little disappointed in my colleagues at the table. Of course we're ready. Why wouldn't we be ready? This is what Fall River is about. So the biggest selling point about the city of Fall River, if we don't have the workforce, we have the ability to get the workforce. When you start looking at the city of Fall River and you look at all B C C, UMass Dartmouth, Brown, Harvard, Providence College, Bryant College, the technology, we can pull from anywhere. So for us to say that we're not ready to bring any type of industry in is, I don't agree with. We are ready and we just need to support that, right? So in terms of the infrastructure, if the administration comes down and says that the infrastructure is not where it needs to be to support any type of business, whether it's AI, bio, the biotechs, then we'll make sure that the funding is there to provide the resources and the infrastructure that's needed. But absolutely, I mean, when you start looking at what we have currently in the city of Fall River, a lot of these manufacturing companies have already gone to automation. You start looking at machine shops, they already do automation. That is being performed by residents of the city of Fall River. So absolutely, the city of Fall River is ready for any new technology or any new business sector to come into the, into the city and will support that 110%. With that, again, I do think that we have the workforce that's needed to be able to train. You know, we have funding for training employees and the workforce that's needed. So we can support that and I'll personally continue to support it. But any AI company that is watching this forum, you're more than welcome. I'll open the door and cut the ribbon for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Going to head back to Michael Sylvia, the Fall River reporter, for our next question and it will be answered first by Brad Kilby.
A developer was willing to come in and convert the Bank Street Armory into housing to include affordable and veteran spaces. This was killed by the current city council. If elected or re-elected and it came back to the city council, would you support it being converted into housing or do you want to keep it a rec center?
Big yes. I thought we, we had a great proposal and the developer has a building that he renovated across the street, the old Jiffy Tech building. So the developer has a, had a, a great resume. And I, if that would have passed the council, right now you would see a wonderful facility there. And he had, he had plans. I'm chairman of real estate and he had some very, very good plans in terms of some incentives for veterans and keeping the, of course, the facade of the building, the interior being historic according to Fall River standards. And Mr. Malcolm has a great, a great record. So, yeah, I mean, hopefully it'll be revisited because it's still sitting there. It is still sitting there and I do not want it to see it to become the old police station. The city is, has to adapt, has to adapt to a waterfront. It's a beautiful building. It's going to be preserved, but for a different use. I mean, we've, we've given that one plenty of time, plenty of time. So I am 110% in support of that initial plan that was before the city council.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira.
I am an absolute no. And Brad and I are friends and we can agree to disagree, but that is our last historic building in this city. And I have talked to the mayor about it and there was a company that was coming in and he was going to get back to me and the wheels of government sometimes turn slow. But I have talked to Brad Paul from San Francisco who comes here to Fall River often and does a lot of work and I had a meeting with him and a gentleman who purchased the South Star in New Bedford to do some work there, who's interested as well. I think that there's a way to save that. We have a historical commission in this city that we tend to not really listen to and they have a lot of great ideas. And they have a lot of great ideas. And I think that that can be used by the community. Have an area, have a rec space for the community. And also upper floors for other, other rental spaces that they could have. But I think just to make apartments, apartments, apartments. I mean, how many more apartments are we going to have? And do we have the fight to at least save our last historic building? All the veterans were thrown out of that building when it closed. Some of them still don't even have quarters to go to. Hopefully, with Pine Street buying Tuscan Building, we can use that building now for veteran groups that don't have a home because they deserve it.
Thank, thank you. Mr. Ponti.
Well, so no, I don't think housing is the highest and best use of that piece of real estate. I honestly think that we need more community buildings, whether it's for our veterans. I know up until recently EMS was looking for a place. I didn't think the highest and best use of that property was to convert it to housing. I had a parking issue with it. I had a sustainability issue with it. I knew that there were ties and tiffs, unfortunately, that need to be accompanied by that. So the presentation that came before us on the city council when it came, it wasn't something that I was of support. And I think that there needs to be a plan in place. The nostalgia to me about it being the old, you know, playing basketball there and there was, you know, a wrestling match and all these other things there, I can appreciate. But I think we also need to press the mayor, whoever it may be, to make sure that a plan comes down in the next 24 months to repurpose and redevelop or do something with that building. Because I don't want it to turn into another police station. I do not want it to turn into another airport road catastrophe. There needs to be a plan, whether it's working with the redevelopment authority or working with outside investors. We need a plan to develop that and it needs to be at its highest and best use.
Thank you. Mr. Tiff.
I would, I would not approve either because I would not want to see any apartment in the downtown area. But at least we need to find out, come up with a plan more, more time and not till now. Because that place, if you put a cultural center there for nonprofit organization that doesn't have an office there, it'd be like a hub culture there. And, you know, you have, like in Providence, they have an East Culture, South Culture Center. They are, they use for nonprofit organization that doesn't have any office. They go there and it's an opportunity. You know, we could give the money, sign it to the nonprofit and then they could ask for the fund for mass culture for to do like rehab it for grants and stuff for the building.
Thank you. Mr. Kadim.
Thank you. Absolutely not. I do not support housing in that facility. That's the easy way out. I mean, we can put housing in any of our buildings. I mean, there's enough spaces that can be rehabbed and renovated for housing. We can just go down Pleasant Street, the Flint, down south. You know, when we start talking about Fall River and wanting to work, live and have fun in Fall River, we have to have the fun component. And I think part of it, there needs to be a little bit more, as some of my colleagues had mentioned, about a community space, right? So that means that we might really need to take a hard look and have a public-private partnership. You could have the arts there. You could have entertainment. You could have an incubator for small businesses if we're talking about AI industries coming in. There's a whole host of things. But if we want to take a substandard approach to things and the easy way out and put housing there, that's not what I would support. Sometimes you got to go down the bumpy road and have some real conversations and you have to put your money where your mouth is. And part of that means that government sometimes has to create a joint partnership with the private sector. And I think that's what's going to be needed for that building. It is a historic site. There is way more value in that building than just housing. I think it needs to be open to the community. And I think if it's done properly, it can tie into what the development is in 79.
Thank you. Mr. Canule.
I'm also opposed to the housing use of that building. We're not getting more land back, right? We have these old buildings. We have the police station that's fallen into disarray. But as Linda has mentioned, this is one of our last buildings. We take money out of everybody's real estate checks called the Community Preservation Act. And we should be using that money to rehabilitate this building. That is a building we need to keep. We need to keep that. It's a beautiful area. It can be used for a much better purpose than housing. There's a lot of other places we can put houses up. But I don't support housing over there. I think we should be using CPA funds to do that and so that we can provide a benefit to the community, a service, whether that's a center. You know, I think I'm open to other ideas, as Council Kadim has mentioned. Maybe we do need to enter into some public-private partnership of sorts where there's someone in there helping us with drive people in there. I don't want to support housing there.
Thank you. Dan Maderis is next with our next question and will be answered by Linda Pereira first.
So we often hear about revitalization of the Flint and it's needed. But what other neighborhood do you think is most in need of help? And how do you think the council can help accomplish that?
Well, I think that we have to do one step at a time, Dan. And the Flint does need revitalization. Let's work on that and see where that is. I've often said they should have a list of all the properties that are there, the square footage of the properties. Do they have internet access? Do they have handicap bathrooms? Let people know what's there and try to get businesses in there. I know they've done some facades around there. Some of the buildings have been bought. I think four of the buildings have been purchased. So with the purchase of those buildings and the developers going out and, you know, getting people to come in to do the work. Two of them, I believe, were bought from a gentleman in New Bedford. And two of them, I think, was a gentleman in Fall River. You're going to see that place start to develop. But if you want to rent spaces there as a landlord, you need to tell people what you have there. And nobody knows. There's no place where you can go to get that. We spoke earlier of, you know, looking at permits for different businesses and things like that and the red tape people have to go through. There should be some seminars if you want to open up a business. If you're, you know, a woman in business, a minority in business, what loans, what's available to you? Because we do have a community that really has been immersed with many other nationalities. There's Pakistani restaurant, the Indian restaurant. I love the Pakistani one on Bedford. And the Indian restaurant is good. There's an Ecuadorian restaurant and market that opened. Go and explore these places.
Thank you. Mr. Ponti.
So we need to make sure we connect our waterfront to our downtown. They need to be, they need to connect. They need to talk to each other. With the Route 79 project upcoming, I really love to see that. And I think if we did that, I think that'd be great. What I also believe is continue to advocate for storefront improvement programs to revitalize these neighborhoods, whether it's our South Main Street corridor or if it's in our Flint. We need to make sure we do that. The permitting process that keep going back, we need to make sure that's efficient and easy to work with. We need to continue to offer low-interest loans to small businesses for them to expand in Fall River. Whether it's improving their properties or their storefronts, we need to make sure we continue to do that. But really, to answer your question, Dan, as long as we try to find a way to connect our downtown to our waterfront and maybe do a study that looks at South Main Street from City Hall all the way down to Columbia Street and seeing if it makes sense to make that a one-way with diagonal parking and seeing if that would make more foot traffic, improve parking and try to, and that will also increase parking revenue for the city as well and try to make our downtown a destination. Everything will end up coming from our waterfront up that hill. And we need to make sure that that is connected.
Thank you. Mr. Tiff.
The Flint is, when I moved, when I first moved in in 1999, the Flint, it was surviving, you know. You got storefront, you got block party by Flint Neighborhood Association. Now it's gone. It seemed like a ghost town. And why, why is it a ghost town? Because the, when people go in there, open a business, less than a year, they close. How come? Maybe because of no, no attraction, no much of promoted, much of maybe the parking space. But we need to do better planning with that. And I'm hoping to advocate more as to create like maybe a business alliance, you know, just bring all the business people to come in and, you know, sit on the table and try to, what can we help to grow your business? Because I am in the Flint too and it is a struggle, you know.
Thank you. Mr. Kadim.
Sad to say, the entire South End. I've lived in the South End of the city until 2018, moved to the North End. And I know they consider me a carpetbagger now. But driving through the South End, it's just so disheartening to see when you go Rodman Street, you know, the Niagara neighborhood, Brayton Ave. I mean, it, it looks like a third world country, the Flint, East Main, South Main, Beffert Street, Corky Row, right? You name it. It just, we need so much investment. And this is where I think the conversation and the debate should really come into about tiffs and ties and the potential benefits that those, you know, tools maybe have in terms of getting these neighborhoods developed. You know, when I was a part, when I was part of the Flanagan administration, we created building blocks, right? And the theme was that we were going to start to revitalize neighborhoods block by block. And I think that's the mindset that we need to have. And we need to get back to that and get back to community and fostering those neighborhood, you know, community centers. And I think a lot of it can take place. But again, it requires a lot of investment and it's going to require public-private partnerships. And I know some folks don't want to hear that, but I think that's what's necessary. And I think we need to look towards that. I'm extremely excited about Anthony Cudero and his projects that he has on Beffert Street and especially Hartwell Street. When you start looking at those potential developments over there, that's going to transform neighborhoods, right? And to my colleague who is talking about connectivity of downtown to 79, I agree with that. But they need to be two completely separate entities and identities. Because if not, they will not succeed if we merge them together.
Thank you. Mr. Canule.
Over the course of my campaign, I've gone to almost every neighborhood association out there. And I think it's hard to pick one in particular because each, each meeting I go to, there are different challenges in their neighborhood. But when I think about, you know, neighborhoods like the Flint that have really been neglected, I have to agree with Council Kadim. The South End of the city, I think, really feels neglected. I think when I, the residents I speak with, when I go door to door in those neighborhoods, are telling me that, you know, the, the other side of the city looks wonderful and we want this side of the city to look wonderful as well. And I think we see that when it comes to voter turnout too. They don't show up as much as the folks in the North End. And I think if we put a little bit more money in those areas and supported them, they'd feel more engaged in this community. I think we need to strengthen our neighborhood associations and bring them to the table and ask them, what do you need from the city? What do you need from us to help get you guys strong again? Because I go to some of these meetings, there's double-digit folks, other meetings, there's only a few. And I think that goes back to the engagement that we're seeing. And part of it's because people don't feel like the city is investing in them.
Thank you. Mr. Kilby.
Well, looking at my notes here, what Council Kadim stated is the exact same thing. I stated Corky Row area, yes. Downtown, yes. East Main Street, absolutely. But for now, I think the focus should be the Flint. I grew up in the Flint until I was 10 years old and then I'm a carpetbagger as well. I moved to the, to the Highlands when I was 10. But I remember the Flint was just bustling with activity. It was a movie theater decorated for Christmas. There were mom and pop shops. There were Lebanese businesses. There was French businesses. There was a Pleasant Drug where everybody bought their Christmas trees. It was just amazing, amazing as a child growing up until 10 years old in that Flint area. Now I just see vacant storefronts. I don't see much going on there. So to answer the question, beyond the Flint, I would echo what Council Kadim said with regards to those areas of the city. And I will also give credit to Anthony Cudero. I'll tell you, I went to high school with him. He started out with nothing. He was raised in a sentiment. And he's done so much, so much to revitalize the city of Fall River. And credit to him. He's done a great deal and I hope he continues to do that for us. Thanks.
Thank you. Time now for our closing statements as we are finished with the questions for this evening. And our first closing statement will be issued by Ricky Tiff.
Well, first of all, thank you, FRC Media TV. And thank you, Mike, and thank you, Pam, and thank you, Dan, and thank you, Lucy, with the camera. And also thank you for folks listening online or on TV. My name is Ricky Tiff. I am, I'm sorry, my name is Ricky Tiff. I am for, I've been living in Fall River since 1999. I'm married with four children and my second one has been in the Army for 16 years. And I purchased my first house in 2011. And I keep running for city council almost four times now, as you can see, because I don't want to quit because I love the city. And I believe that I could help change, be part of the change. Because I always told my kid, if you don't like the city, don't move. Be part of it and try to change at the best that you can. So hopefully on November 11th, fourth, on Tuesday, you will consider one of your vote. And I am not a politician. I'm always an activist, just a local business, trying to help the city as the way I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kadim.
Thank you. I just want to use my 90 seconds not to talk about me because at the end of the day, this isn't about me or anybody up here. This is about the city of Fall River and the residents. So I want to just take the opportunity to urge the residents to get involved, number one, at the local level. When we look at local government, it's the most democratic process that we have. And there is such a decline in terms of participation for people trying to get involved either on boards or committees or volunteering and even just local politics. You know, you go back 10, 15 years, there were 20, 25, 30 people running for the city council. There were 10, 15 people running for mayor. We don't see that anymore. I just ask and urge the residents of Fall River to have your voices be heard. Go out on election, whether you're voting for me or any of the colleagues here, my colleagues here, or if you choose not to vote for any of us, that is still having your voice heard. Submit a blank ballot, but please go out and vote. That is the only thing I ask for. Second ask would be if you could give me one of your nine votes, I'd appreciate that as well. But at the end of the day, it is about you, having your voices be heard. That's how change takes place. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Canule.
I want to thank everyone who helped organize tonight's debate, Mike, Pam, Dan, Keith, Lucy, and everybody else I can't see behind the scenes. And thank you to the viewers at home for watching and paying attention. My name is Michael Canule and I'm running for the city council because I love this city and I believe in its future. Fall River has always been my home. It's where my wife Stephanie and I are raising our three boys, where we go to church every Sunday and where I want every family to feel safe, supported, and proud to live. Professionally, I spent 15 years in business analysis, helping organizations make smart, data-driven decisions and manage resources efficiently. I want to bring that same practical, results-oriented mindset to city government. My campaign is built around three words: people, priorities, and progress. People, putting residents first by listening and strengthening our neighborhoods. The priorities, focusing on what matters most, public safety, infrastructure, and keeping the city affordable through responsible planning. And progress, delivering real improvements people can see and feel, not just promises or headlines. I'm not a politician. I'm a husband, a father, a parishioner, a neighbor. And I want to be your public servant and someone who understands what families are facing. I'll be an independent, practical voice who asks the right questions and always puts Fall River first. And on November 4th, I respectfully ask for one of your votes for city council. And I'll be the first name you see on the ballot. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Kilby.
Thank you, everyone, for Bristol Community College, you individuals for, for having us. I've been living, lived in Fall, I've lived in Fall River my entire life. I think when you, if you do vote for me, you know what you're getting. You're getting someone who has a great deal of experience. You're getting someone who loves the city. I would, I can't imagine raising a family or living anywhere else. I really don't. I have deep roots here. I have law practice here, was formerly a teacher in elementary schools. I have now a growing family. And I'm sorry, not elementary schools, but in a Jirfee High School. So I think I have a great deal of knowledge in terms of experience and education. And I really wish, as Council Kadim stated, there was more participation. And I really do not like and it's disheartening to see the lack of candidates. It really is. And the lack of interest and what can we, what can we do to, to get more people to vote? And just, you know, let them know, you know, how important participation in government is. In colonial times, for instance, it was an obligation to spend some time running for public service or serving as a public service. It was a moral obligation to help your community. What's happened? So I urge everyone to vote and, and I hope it's, it's over 10% this time. I really do. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira.
Thank you all for putting this together, Keith, and for your crew and all of the good questions that were asked today. You know, having the title city councillor is okay. But having the title as being an advocate for people, for me, is what I am. advocate for people, for me, is what I am. I view myself as being a servant for the people. When people call, my phone doesn't get off at 5 o'clock, it doesn't shut off, it doesn't shut off on weekends or holidays. Today, I can tell you four calls I got before I got here. I'll show you the, the messages that I've gotten. Because that's what I think our job is too, not just legislative, but to help the people. It saddens me to live in a society that is so negative and that things are so cruel. No wonder nobody wants to get into running for office because it's like, you know, it's like, I hate to put it this way, but it's like going for a proctology appointment. It's ridiculous. And all this negativity. Get up and do something, make change. If you don't agree with something, an elected official says, you have your opinion, I have mine. We just did it with councillor Kilby and I on, on an issue. But you're still friends. Talk about that. Don't talk about somebody's hair or somebody's weight or somebody's glasses.
Thank you.
That is ridiculous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ponti.
Thank you all for having us. First off, what I learned when I first got elected to the city council is I'm not going to be able to do anything by myself. I have to be able to at least count to five before I can do anything at all. And that's something that I've taken pride in, being able to accomplish what we have all accomplished, whether it's individually or as an elective body, to serve this community and to try to make you as proud as we possibly can be. One of the other things I've learned early on is that as a councillor, what we can do and we can execute well is to be your advocate and to be your voice. I think I have been able to say I, I take great pride in holding people accountable. That's why I love running for city council, right? I love running for city council because I will hold every single department head, every single administration, and every single person that comes before this city council accountable to protect the best interests of the city of Fall River. It's one of the greatest accomplishments of my life to be elected to the Fall River city council and it's a job that I take seriously and I do it with great pride and enthusiasm. So I do ask on Election Day, on November 4th, that you give me one of your nine votes so I can continue to represent you and your family. And I promise you and your family will continue to get nothing but my very best. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I want to thank the candidates and our panelists tonight for their participation in tonight's forum. You can watch a replay of these forums and find out more information about the candidates and the issues in Fall River by visiting our FRC Media website and our special election page, frmedia.org/election2025.